Okay, welcome to the special meeting, the Murfreesboro City Council, September 3rd, 2015, 5:30. We're going to be talking about our Murfreesboro 2035 Plan, specifically discuss the guiding principles of our comprehensive plan. Mr. Lyons, give me that.
Just, Task Force had a good meeting yesterday. We introduced the Future Land Use Plan, which, as we have shared with you previously, this is one of the more important chapters of the comprehensive plan. And one of the things we had shared with the Task Force and the folks who were there last night is, this is because of the importance of the chapter, it was introduced this month, but we want the public an opportunity to see it, review it a little bit, and then come back in October and have a community meeting where we can have some more dialogue with the members of the city and the residents of the city so we can get some additional input as we begin to work on that. We needed to develop a draft plan, it's actually on the wall there, and it's been in the agenda materials. And in putting together that first cut at a Future Land Use Plan, there was analysis done about active subdivisions, major thoroughfare plan projects, road improvements, access to water, sewer, and future utility extensions. And then also trying to use some of our institutional knowledge about where growth is occurring and what parts of our community are seeing more growth than others. So that begins to be the start of developing a Future Land Use Plan, but we certainly look forward to your review and input over the coming weeks. And Mr. Tooley, I think, wants to go over some of the guiding principles which really become, as we say, the guiding principles of where the comprehensive plan is going. We want to make sure we're on track. So Mr. Tooley would be ready to talk to you about that?
Great. Thank you, Rob. Thank you, Mayor, and council members for inviting me to come before you this evening. As Rob mentioned, we do want to go over some of the key guiding principles of the comprehensive plan chapters that we've developed to date. This is just a few of several guiding principles. Each chapter usually has about seven to eight, 10 guiding principles. The land use chapter has, I believe, 15 to 20, as I remember. But we wanted to just show you a few of the guiding principles to hopefully gain your support and help you to understand how these have influenced the development of these key plan elements. So with that, what I'll do is just introduce the principles and then, again, illustrate how they've been utilized throughout the various chapters, and then hopefully we can have a little discussion about them. The first one, principle one, as you know, is a very important one regarding participation and inclusiveness. Encourage broad citizen participation to benefit from the knowledge, insights, and support of all local residents. Create a community where people from all backgrounds, cultures, and income levels feel included and welcomed. Going into this whole planning program, it was your wish and concern that we have as much public engagement as possible, and we've hopefully fulfilled that concern or issue through our online discussion forum, all of the meetings, the focus groups that we've been having, the community workshops that we've had and will continue to have. Every time we're up here, we have several meetings with key stakeholders, participants, et cetera. So, an important principle. Secondly, principle two, cooperation. Coordinate planning with school districts, community organizations, adjacent communities, county and regional government, and where possible, seek common solutions that are efficient and cost-effective. This is an ongoing interest. Some of the recommendations that are in a couple of the chapters. One, county coordination. Coordinate with Rutherford County to achieve uniform development standards for future growth within the urban growth boundary. This is going to be very important because, as you know, our planning area consists of not only the lands within your city limits, but extending out to your urban growth boundary. So when we're proposing land use classifications within the urban growth boundary, they are going to need to be supported to some degree by Rutherford County, at least acknowledged, but hopefully we'll be able to develop some sort of jurisdictional mechanism or administrative mechanism through which we can ensure that the land uses that we're proposing in the urban growth boundary can and will occur in a coordinated fashion. Coordination with school districts, the Murfreesboro City Schools and the Rutherford County School District, we'll talk about in latter principles. It's very important because we are projecting the need for almost 1,100 acres of needed property for additional schools, elementary, middle, and high schools throughout the planning area. And then coordination with nonprofits and local foundations. We had a very good meeting with several participants from foundations this morning, but it's going to take the participation of several entities to pull this plan off now and in the future. The third principle in the first chapter, design. Encourage great design and innovation. Identify ways that new development can respect the natural beauty and unique neighborhood identities that make Murfreesboro an attractive city. At the same time, look for ways to attract new industries that can thrive in the city. Design, spatial design, how this plan is implemented on the land is very important. Throughout the land use chapter, we discuss the need for predictable development of high quality. But there are several strategies that I'll review right now. Position downtown as a unique local and regional destination, viable place to conduct business. Reestablish the traditional urban character of downtown. Adopt policies to promote the construction of high-performance, green buildings within the plan area, planning area. This can happen through a streamlined permitting process, as well as something we were discussing last night, hopefully extending the performance guide, excuse me, the performance-based guidelines that you find within the gateway overlay district citywide at some point in the future so we can ensure that all development meets that same quality. And a last one was consider developing a demonstration gateway entrance feature for the Interstate 24 New Salem Highway interchange, which is one of several gateway features we were recommending. But throughout the plan, design is an important aspect, both spatially and in principle. Here's, this is the first principle in Chapter Two, incent performance. I'm trying to get away from using the term incentivized because my sister keeps telling me that's grammatically incorrect. Incent performance, maximize the use of planning and financial tools to mitigate the cost of development to the community while providing incentives for well-planned development that achieves stated city principles and goals. So, this is throughout several chapters, actually, how we can incent the performance of the development community to help get some of the key objectives of the city across in future development. We have been talking about, I'm sorry?
I was just going to say, just as, by way of illustration, I believe in your council meeting last week, you approved the contract with Tom Trent, who is going to help us develop some analysis about things like tax increment financing and other tools that we can use to perhaps look at redevelopment areas and infill developments. So you'll have specific tools that can come out of that. So while the comprehensive plan is not done, there are some of these things that really appear to be relevant that don't need to necessarily wait till the end with more work to come in that one particular area.
Yes, sir. The sooner we can get started on that kind of, the special taxation and other programs, financing programs, to again stimulate local investment and redevelopment, the better. But so we have been talking about against tax increment financing and payment in lieu of taxes-related programs. We've also been suggesting the use of density bonuses as well as floor-to-area ratio bonuses for the inclusion of affordable housing into planned unit developments and planned residential developments. This will, of course, require additional study by city staff, but it would be one way to enable the development community to provide some kinds of affordable housing without getting pinged financially for doing that. Also provide density bonuses and other incentives for, again, stimulating redevelopment projects, high-performance, green building projects, and the like. And we'll talk a little bit about affordable housing shortly. We also have recommended revising Appendix A, the zoning ordinance, to include fewer residential districts and more development options within those districts, and in two, as well as to provide increased open space ratio areas for that as well. And we'll talk about that momentarily. Any questions as far as that's concerned?
How do you work with the fact that a lot of people don't want density? And density's a bad word to a lot of people, and they don't want anything next door to them, whereas density is the opposite of urban sprawl. How do we work that in and educate the population?
Yeah. And based on what we were talking about last evening, I think that was a good example where you can, one can see that density is a concern, but perhaps more so than the concern about density is the need for open space. Making sure you have the requisite open space so you can have slightly denser areas. So maybe more people are concerned about having the requisite open space available to them rather than the concern about so many people being closer together.
So we need to shift the thought to more open space in these developments?
That's what I would recommend.
And reward density by, or reward it with that?
Exactly right. That's what we would recommend, and that's how we were couching the idea of reducing the number of residential zoning districts by providing development options with which developers could then exercise their own discretion in the size of parcels, but they would also be required to provide a certain percentage of open space in return. And that open space would be community open space that could be for small neighborhood parks, it could be for recreational trails, it could be to preserve sensitive environmental areas as well.
I thought we had a good example of that last night.
Yes, sir.
At the planning commission.
You know, if we're going to do, if you go into a scenario where you're saying, all right, well, look, we'll do, this would typically be RS 15, just for example, and we'll say, well, you can go to RS 12 if you'll leave X number of grass, X number of green space out there, you know, in this same place. You know, we really are not adding the number of people, you know, too much. I mean, to some degree, we got to figure out how, in some places, we can add, you know, more people per square, more people per acre without it impacting our roads, our infrastructure. You know, there are places where we should be set up better to do that, but in some of these areas, if the lots are RS 8, but you have to leave half the parcel in green space, there's no more people
That's exactly right.
Coming to the road than there would be, I mean, but we have to figure out both sides of the equation, right?
Right. Yeah, but you're exactly right. So if the developer has discretion of building X number of lots at RS 15, X number of lots at RS 12, but then with the RS 12, you have to leave 15% open space ratio with an RS 8, you have to leave 30%. It's remaining density neutral as compared if you did all RS 15. So, but then that way, you're, again, maintaining the same density as you're pointing out, but you're providing a lot more open space for community recreational areas.
And as part of the plan and part of this Future Land Use Map, though, there are going to be some areas that are higher density, I mean, per acre, this is the best way I know how to say it.
Yes, sir.
Where there are, where there is a net gain in density. And that is somewhere outlined on the map, or is going to be outlined on the map one day to where we kind of think we're best suited to do that? Is that right?
That's correct. We basically, at this juncture, have only used the densities that you currently have in your zoning district. So, but we've called it something else, for example, like, our general residential includes RS 8, RS 4, RZ, and RD. Those are your higher-density residential districts. But, so there is, where that's practicable or practical, like adjacent to small-scale commercial areas, for example, and in other places, yes, we've tried to incorporate that, just again, to provide a mix of housing opportunities or housing typologies to accommodate this, what we believe we'll be seeing a changing demographic in the near future. But for most of the areas within the Future Land Use Map, we've used lower-density residential just because, again, it's in the urban growth boundary area. It may not readily be able to receive city services, and so we're suggesting that in those cases where there's shallow depth to bedrock, for example, very limited soil suitability for septic, then we would have a density of like one unit per acre maximum, or an RS 15 kind of area if it's more accommodating environmentally. So this principle of direct growth establishes a balance between contiguous outward growth and inward-directed infill development, redevelopment, rehabilitation, and reuse projects. Direct growth into areas where basic services such as sanitary sewer, water supply facilities, police and fire protection can be efficiently and economically provided in order to promote the responsible use of land, infrastructure, energy, and other resources. As Mr. Lyons had pointed out, last time we were in town, we did meet with several departmental heads, and we mapped out a growth sequencing program, which actually was a recommendation within our second chapter to do. But so in doing that, we identified land that would be available for development within zero to five years. This would be land that's basically already been permitted, land that will be available in five to 10 years, 10 to 15, and so on. So that has, in doing, going through that exercise, that basically defined our planning area for development within the next 20 years. As you see on this map, the lands that are not colored are, we have applied a land use classification of rural slash agriculture, and that's the light green shade that you'll see on the Future Land Use Plan, which consists of about 33,000 acres or so. At the same time, those also are the lands that have some of the highest environmental constraints, so it may never really be able to be developed in the first place.
How do you suggest educating the developers so that when they purchase land for development uses, they're looking at how much of this land is usable? With the concept that we're going with here is, you're not going to use all your useful property. Because, I mean, we recently had an apartment complex that was being built, and it had been approved that he would build four units per building. Well, he, in fact, when the economy went south in 2008, he had started building five units per building, which allowed him to increase his density on the project, on the area that he used. He later came back on the property for the next phase that hadn't been developed and said, I know I'm going above my density rating, but he said, I still have all this land that I can develop. Subsequently, it was approved. I mean, how do we, how do we educate them to understand that once this development is developed, that you can't go any further and use this land, even though it's developable land? Because I think that's kind of the fear of some, even last night, I think that might have been some of the fear was, well, how much of this land are they not using that they could come back later and say,
Oh, yeah.
We want to develop on this property. But it's green space now, but we've got room to build five or six more houses here.
Well, if we did pursue this idea of creating these, or streamlining your zoning districts and then having the development options where they had to provide a X amount of open space for making smaller parcels, I think they'd be pretty much locked into doing that. I mean, that would be a legal requirement. I don't mean to skirt your question, but I think that-
I don't think you're skirting it, but I do think it's going to have to go a change of their mentality of how much
Indeed.
The land is developable.
Right. That's right. I think it's going to take a shift in mindset as far as looking at open space and seeing that as so much infrastructure, as so much like a utility is an piece of infrastructure. Parks are infrastructure. So, principle three, manage growth, improve and expand the city's capacity to enact effective growth management policies while encouraging compatible economic development. Again, we're not trying to ping the development community. With every kind of regulatory kind of approach we were recommending, there's always a carrot to, again, incent the developers to do these kind of things. But one thing we've talked about is, and all of these will require, again, in-depth staff scrutiny before the city would ever want to do something, but we are suggesting or recommending a parkland dedication ordinance, a fee and lieu ordinance, and a parkland development ordinance. So this would be a requirement where the development community, when they're developing a new subdivision, they would put, they would have to be, they'd be required to put aside a certain amount of open space and develop it to a certain degree so that could then become a future park. Now, this goes hand in hand with what we were just talking about. So if the developer decides to take advantage of these various development options where they are developing smaller parcels and they have greater open space ratios, those open space ratios can then factor into the parkland dedication. So all of this is a means of helping to help the developer maintain open space. So, but a parkland dedication will be one way, and this is commonly used, and we talked about it last night within the task force, and identified all of, as you remember, we've used comparison communities throughout this process, about 14 different comparison communities. The majority of the communities we've used do have some form of parkland dedication ordinance. So again, we wouldn't be necessarily putting additional burdens on the developers because we would be providing some other ways of incenting that through density bonuses, increased floor-to-area ratios, et cetera. So that's one thing that I think we're very much in support of. We've written many parkland dedication ordinances for cities. Throughout Texas, this is a common practice. And it's one way of, again, help getting the private sector to help pay for the acquisition of open space and the, to some degree, the development of that open space. Now, how that is maintained and operated, that can be through a homeowners association, it could be through the Parks Department, there are a variety of ways that could then subsequently be administered and maintained. We've also, again, recommended standing up a quasi-governmental redevelopment commission that would be responsible for administering your special taxation districts, like your TIF districts, and your pilot programs when they are also developed. We work with several redevelopment commissions around the country, and it's a very good way of having an organization that can help support the development community, overcome certain obstacles or barriers to redeveloping a certain parcel of property.
Have they had any problem in Texas where they've already tried this with trying to- Have they had any problem in Texas where they've already tried this with trying to, you just referred to it, maintain the property? Because, I mean, I can see the developer being more than willing to cut the green space and maintain the trailways around the, the area, whether it's water retention or whatever. I can see them doing that during the development of the project. Beyond that, is that something that we have to focus on from the planning side and make sure that there is an ongoing plan as to how that will be maintained?
Yes, sir. And that's typically, that can be done through a homeowners association, that's done often, and if that's a successful way of doing it, or it can be something that the parks department takes on, if it's so inclined.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just concerned that in some of your smaller subdivisions where there are smaller homes, that there may not be a homeowners association.
Understood, yeah. And that'll have to be factored into, you're right.
Many of the neighborhoods that we see developed, especially, you know, some with, you know, any size to them are typically including a pool, tennis courts, maybe some walking trails that the HOA maintains, and that can be the kind of thing that would count toward that. But you're right, Mr. Smotherman, there's also some very small subdivisions that maybe there's in lieu of. We're going to need to do more work on this topic to see, you know, how we would need to, to shape something like that. But the idea that the community's growing and, you know, the recreational areas are important, we'll have to see where it takes us.
Because we are, as we'll talk about shortly, we're looking at a projected need of about 977 acres of needed parkland. Most of that will be neighborhood parks. So that's something that the city hasn't really developed as much as the, your community parks and regional parks. Although there will be the need for about a 200-acre regional park in addition to the Barfield Crescent Park you have right now.
On the green space that we currently, I'm, I'm sorry, I keep asking questions during your presentation, but on the, the green space property that we have behind the schools right now that we're currently using or planning to use as neighborhood parks, would that be factored into the parks-
Yes, sir.
...at that point?
Okay.
Aaron, I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
When we're looking at these park areas, what happens if you have, if you can't find areas to put a park in a certain, certain area? So say, an example is overall creek in our new school area, and say that all the area around the school is already residential or multifamily, and some of that property may have been zoned multifamily 12, 15 years ago, but what happens if, as they're developing, we can't find that, that land?
That's where a, a fee-in lieu of the parkland dedication would, would kick in to where the developer would be required to, to participate in providing a certain amount of money that would go into a general fund, and then that would be applied to parkland development within, and then you could add another stipulation or requirement that it would be, a park would be developed within a, a certain geographic area in proximity to that new development.
Okay, that was, I knew we were talking about the fee-based part, but, you know, when we're looking at certain areas that either may be developed or all the property's own, trying to find a, a place to put a park in could be problematic-
Indeed.
-unless someone would be willing to rezone their property.
Right.
And they want to be paid for it.
Sure.
So that's where you bank.
We've also recommended developing a land trust program that might be countywide. This would be for the administration of conservation easements, as well as promoting the development of cluster and conservation development programs throughout the planning area and the county, hopefully, as a means of preserving and perpetuating the use of agricultural lands around the city. Then we've also recommended that the city consider hiring a community redevelopment officer that could really take on this whole redevelopment kind of program on behalf of the city, work with the development community in identifying redevelopable areas, help administer the TIF or other taxation, special taxation programs on behalf of the redevelopment commission as well. But it really would be, I know that, that you all work very closely with the county's industrial development board. We do feel that something more city-specific is required. Principle five, this is something we recommended in chapter two, and it's finally really being discussed in chapter four, preserve community character. As Murphysboro continues to grow, strive to preserve the attributes of the community's unique hometown character and identity, the beauty of its natural environment, and the strengths of its neighborhoods while minimizing the adverse effects of growth. So one of the key recommendations in the land use chapter, convert currently zoned and developed neighborhoods to a neighborhood conservation district or a neighborhood restoration district. And I'll explain those very briefly. As we talked about last night, what we're doing and what's, what has been illustrated on your future land use map is, there are a lot of residential areas that are zoned or that are shaded in various shades of gray based on density. What we're recommending is that those neighborhoods are in place, they're intact, they're well-established. There's nothing we're going to be doing to those neighborhoods in the next 20 years. So, yeah, they're largely built out and stable, and there's no significant change in development as anticipated. But it's designed to preserve the existing housing stock and avoid excessive nonconformities and variance requests, parcel sizes, et cetera, and meant to lock in those very qualities that, 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 that contribute to the character of that neighborhood. So any new, new development or infill development would have to conform to the, the development densities and intensities that are found within that, within that neighborhood. So if you had a neighborhood of vari- where there were a bunch of residences of varying, that had varying setbacks, for example, that had been developed over the years, what you would do if you wanted to build a new home in that, in that neighborhood was, you'd average the setback, basically, and that's the setback that, that you would require for that infill kind of development. But it's essentially meant to lock in the standards that are inherent within your existing neighborhoods. The neighborhood conservation district designation then can be further subdivided, as we have done on the future land use map, into sub-districts. And this will be very important. We're kind of thinking long-range here. When you all decide to maybe consider developing a unified development code, you're going to need to be breaking down your residential districts accordingly. So what we've done here is we have suggested or recommended an existing NC one neighborhood conservation district, which would basically be areas where neighborhoods are one to three acres in size. NC two would be your suburban residential district, and that would include your RS 15, RS 12, and RS 10. An NC three district would be more auto-urban, general residential, that could include your RS 10. We see the RS 10 district is going either larger or smaller density, or lower density, or higher density. So it could be in both of these districts as appropriate, but it'd be the RS 10, RS eight, RS four, RD, et cetera. And then your NS four would be multifamily residential. So if you look at the legend to the left, that's the legend on the future land use map, corresponding with the NC one, two, three, and four, to the left of those, you have suburban estate, suburban residential, auto-urban residential, and multifamily. So that's how we're, we've developed that. So when you look at the future land use map, what we've essentially done is, this is just a first draft, a first iteration, is we've extended those, those current districts into So you can see, there's a lot of gray on that map, but that's all existing residential We're also looking at, or recommending developing a neighborhood restoration district, that would be very much like your neighborhood conservation district, except the neighborhoods, while, while structurally intact, might still require some municipal intervention. We've identified two or three neighborhoods where, again, we feel that they're very, they're very viable, except they still need some help because there's some blighted properties, vacant lands, a lot of rental units, et cetera. So we're considering that we want to maintain the density and intensity of development there, but we want to, we also want to make sure that they remain viable. So we have identified a couple neighborhoods. One would be a neighborhood that is basically bounded by Broad Street to the west, Mercury to the south, and Main Street to the north, and I guess Middle Tennessee Boulevard to the, to the east. A very unique neighborhood. We really looked at this neighborhood in depth in our chapter five, Housing in Neighborhoods, because it embodies all of the qualities that we want to see in future neighborhoods with respect to neighborhood commercial development, walkability, parks, schools, all that kind of thing. So that, all of the good things in this neighborhood, we want to make sure are perpetuated in other neighborhoods. And that's the map that came out of chapter five, where we basically inventoried where all of the neighborhood grocery stores are, your parks, community, community centers like the Patterson Community Center, schools, et cetera. It's interesting because we also looked at connectivity and access into this, this neighborhood, and there are about 34 different points where you can access, or you can enter into this neighborhood. We also looked at West Murphysboro, and interesting, West, interestingly, West Murphysboro only has like five or six key entrance points into this massive, you know, massive development area. Here you have about 35 cul-de-sacs, in West Murphysboro you have 145 cul-de-sacs, so the connectivity is strikingly different. But we have identified, when it comes to redeveloping areas of this neighborhood, certain types of housing that could really, again, perpetuate the character of the neighborhood and provide a really nice dignified living arrangement. Because there are a lot of parcels that are very small, so it's going to require a small kind of housing typology. Moving on, are there any questions about those recommendations? Okay, moving on, principle four, leverage growth. Encourage small-scale retail and services to locate where existing or planned residential and employment densities are sufficient to make delivery of services efficient, and where the city and private sector can collaborate on further enhancements to the urban environment. And I'll just also discuss principle 10 at the same time, before providing examples. Mix of uses, promote mixed land use at different scales, locate retail office, residential, institutional, and recreational uses within walking distance of each other in compact neighborhoods with pedestrian-oriented streets. Land use diversity will protect existing investments while providing opportunities for individual initiative and choice, promote independence of movement, especially for the young and the elderly. Safety in commercial areas through around-the-clock presence of people, and reduce the need for automobile use, and at least enable shorter trips. So I'm sorry if I'm being slightly verbose here, we can try to limit the length of these principles. But what we're suggesting, and it's becoming more and more evident as we look at, at your city, is that you don't have as much neighborhood commercial as other communities that, where we, where we work. And we feel that by enabling and encouraging incenting neighborhood commercial development where possible, is the way that you can start creating or retrofitting that kind of pedestrian orientation, that walkability. So it's not going to be able to happen everywhere, but there will be cases where, hopefully, through our land development regulations, you will be able to enable those kind of commercial-scale retail and other office kind of developments. And one example I used last, last night was, this is a State Farm Insurance Building in Lafayette, Louisiana. It's a really good example because it's of the scale and character of your neighborhood. It has a, a, a very similar kind of roof line. It does have a fairly large parking lot, but it is, it has been effectively screened, and it basically fits very well within the community. Looks like essentially a residence. And so you see this kind of development along your main streets of your, in your communities where, where attorneys or, or real estate agents have, have retrofit an old Victorian home or something like that. This is a, a really nice way of, again, building in commercial and retail office mixed uses into an existing established residential area, making it more walkable.
I think you've got a good point there. I think one of the large obstacles that we have to overcome is, in, in our neighborhoods that were built in the 20s and 30s, we had sidewalks. Downtown area is very walkable. The outlying areas where you get into the 50s and 60s homes, there's no sidewalks, and, and even the main thoroughfares, they're having no sidewalks. And, you know, there's, there's example after example where we recognize that, but there's just not the funding available for it. It's, it's hard to put in a park and much of this stuff that you're referring to here without having that infrastructure in place that allows people to, it, it, the roads have to be pedestrian-friendly. And I think that's one of the places that we're really weak in some of our neighborhoods. You know, I think there's areas where it's perfectly fine and fairly safe to walk down the side of the roadway. There's also areas where you simply can't.
Right.
And, and we have children on a daily basis now that school's back in between the Boys and Girls Club and Mitchell Nelson School, where they're walking right down the middle of the roadway. And I, I found it interesting the other day, there was probably 20 cars on that section that I could see from the roadway that I was on, and there were probably 20 kids in the roadway and 20 cars in the roadway. So, I mean, it's, it's just-
Yeah.
It's not a very good workable scenario.
Right.
And they're riding bicycles, they're walking, they're mothers with strollers, trying to get their kids to and from school. And it's just a, a dangerous environment that we've created, and, and we have to somehow focus trying to get infrastructure in place for those neighborhoods that, in order to accomplish what you're saying here, we need to strive towards.
Exactly, right. It's, it's a tough one to do. I totally understand that. Yes, sir.
I'd add too, just the, from a standpoint of, you know, when you talk about that State Farm building, you know, the Victorian house that is the law office, I think is easy, you know, because it literally-
Yeah.
...is the same thing.
Right.
You know, one of the things, we had a, an issue come before us and within the last year, you know, of a restaurant that was going to be placed near a, a neighborhood. And, you know, the, the main crux of the issue was, they want to make sure it fits, you know, and what, and it, I don't know, we had some word that we were calling it, some high, high quality, or we had some term that we used for it. But the idea that if we would do this, I mean, you know, and I, I feel in just my heart as a citizen, is that, you know, I'd be perfectly happy with some commercial stuff in my neighborhood, much less on the boundary of it, as long as it fits.
Right.
And so I think if we, as we think through this, we got to make sure that if we start to go, go towards this idea, that we have some, some very, I guess the best word I know to say is airtight-
Yeah.
...rules, methodology to follow to say, yes, this absolutely does fit the, you know, I, I'm not a planner and not a developer, so I don't know the right terminology, but like you said, the roof line is the same.
Right.
The, the material is the same. I, I don't want to pick on, you know, a particular gas station, but there are a couple, there's a company that's building a few gas stations around town. They're brick, you know, and they kind of look like a house if they didn't have big gas pumps out in front of them.
Yeah, sure.
But it clearly would not fit in front of a lot of neighborhoods, from a standpoint of me just looking at it, saying, "Does that fit for this particular neighborhood or that particular neighborhood?" So, I mean, as we think through that, I just would, I mean, I'd encourage you, as you write this stuff up, and certainly, Rob, as we think through, you know, how the ordinance or the resolution looks down the road as to how to implement these kinds of things, we need to make that stuff as airtight as possible. Because again, I, I completely understand why people would say, "Wait a minute, no, just don't give them some blank, you know, here it is, you can just be whatever kind of restaurant you want, or whatever kind of gas station, it needs to fit the neighborhood."
Exactly.
I don't mean like a, an exact subdivision, but I mean, the neighborhood, you know, the community.
The, the general character of that neighborhood.
Yeah.
Right, exactly right.
And that is a project we actually are working on as well. Your budget this year included money to finish up- Your budget this year included money to finish up work on design guidelines. We got so far with those a number of years ago, and then we had to kind of call timeout on that, but we've included money to finish that project up, and it is going to try to address some of those, you know, how it looks and how does, how does it fit?
And it'll be important in, in addressing those design guidelines that they are neighborhood-specific. It's not a one-size-fits-all kind of approach. You really have to be, as you're suggesting, council member, that it, these are airtight and neighborhood-specific.
And even the signage would have to be neighborhood-specific.
Totally.
Because, I mean, that, when we're looking at the signage that we're working on now, I mean, I'll use Dr. Chip Wood's office over on, what is it, Clark and?
Hamilton.
Yeah. But, but it looks like a house, and it has monument signage, so I would be comfortable with that business were right next to my house. As long as it, you know, falls within the, the criteria, I, I think there's very good examples in our town of people who have done that. We, we probably have a couple baddie groups as well. But I do think that, you know, what you're saying is achievable, but we have to, you know, like, like Rick said, I mean, when, when you're dealing with a business like a restaurant, you're dealing with most likely a dumpster out back, and it doesn't matter if you're a five-star restaurant or Crystals, probably shouldn't say that, a fast-food place. The, you know, the garbage.
They're going to have a dumpster.
I'm sorry. Free advertisement. But, but, but my point being is, is the garbage still smells, and, and, and I wouldn't want that in my backyard. So, so I, I do think that there's certain obstacles that might, because it's not in a commercial zone, and it isn't a neighborhood, that we have to focus on that, that might not be, you know, the obvious thing of the lighting, or the traffic, or, you know, it's the little things that I think we watch closely.
You're exactly right. I mean, just going beyond, going a little bit further with that, in a lot of cases, when we are writing zoning ordinances for neighborhood commercial areas, you even have to think about the, the size of the delivery vehicles that are going to be driving in to drop off products, or produce, or whatever it is. So, you don't want to, you don't want to have to design a neigh, a subdivision or a neighborhood to accommodate a big semi coming in to drop off a bunch of stuff. So, yeah, limiting the size of delivery vehicles is, would go along to create those kind of airtight regulations.
Let, let me make a comment just about the general, I mean, you know, there are all these hoops as far as the Planning Commission and their review, plat review at, at, in the Planning Department. There, all those reviews and, and processes are, are in place for this, but when we look at guiding principles, this is kind of a, a general idea. There's so much other, in, you talk about infill, there's a lot of substance that has to go behind these principles. The principles are just generally saying, this is what we would want to do, but, I mean, regularly, you know, the Planning Commission deals with how do we buffer between these different districts? So, this just generally gives us an idea that we, we would like to encourage this with a lot of substance behind it from, as, as far as buffering and ordinances and all that, all that other work has to be done at another level, at a different time, but these general broad perspectives as to how we view what we want to see as a community are, are basically what these guideline principles are.
Yes, sir.
Isn't that, is, I mean?
That's exactly right. Yeah, these are principles. They're not, they're, these are not something that you can enforce or regulate. These are, are what are guiding how we're, they're guiding the direction or trajectory of the, of the chapter. You're exactly right. Just in conclusion with this immediate discussion, you know, this, the, that Boulevard development on Middle Tennessee and, and Main Street, that's a good example of a type of, of a, of a development that's approximating a kind of a neighborhood commercial, but at the same time, the, the, the problem here, and this is going to be a perpetual problem, is how do you get around the, the amount of parking that's required? Because that, it basically, you're, you're removing that from the rest of the neighborhood. So, it's kind of, in some ways defeating the purpose, but at the same time, it's getting pretty close to what we're trying to do. You're, you're creating a, a, an area, a commercial area that's on the edge of a residential area. So, that's, it's all good, I don't mean to sound critical, but parking is this, is the, is the, always the problem that you have to, to, to deal with. The amount of on-street parking versus, or onsite parking versus on-street parking. Moving on, Principle Three, fiscally responsible development. Effectively manage future growth to achieve a compact urban form and fiscally responsible pattern of development. Preferably, development should occur on vacant infill areas and/or areas contiguous to existing development, and then sequentially outward as adequate facilities become available. New development or redevelopment on vacant parcels in an existing neighborhood or district should maintain compatibility with existing uses and the prevailing character of the area. This, again, is basically an extension of what we've been talking about, so I'll move on. Principle Eleven, ensure options for walkability. Promote neighborhood development patterns that are highly walkable, meaning there's a mixture of uses within convenient distances so that automobiles are not essential for relatively short trips. And as we were talking about West Murfreesboro, while that is a, has a lot of, of excellent qualities, it's not as walkable as one might want it to be. You can see in this map that came out of Chapter Five that only about forty or fifty percent of that, of that whole area has sidewalks. And so, as Council Member Smotherman mentioned, it's, it's hard to retrofit this kind of thing into existing development. It's a lot easier to plan for.
It's also more difficult when they refuse to come into city limits and take city services, which is what we've run into in the Western Murfreesboro area. And I don't know if that's part of the area that you're including when you say that we don't have sidewalks in those areas, but we don't have any services in those areas.
Right. That's the point. As we were mentioning earlier, school district coordination. Continue close coordination with area school districts regarding new campus locations and joint planning for city-school, park, and recreation areas. This was a spread that came out of Chapter Two, but again, we're projecting with the, with the incre, with the added some hundred and sixty thousand residents within the planning area. We're going to require, within Murfreesboro City Schools, at least nine new elementary schools. Within Rutherford County School District, four elementary schools, nine middle schools, and six high schools, to the tune of about eight hundred and eighty acres of property. Not to mention all of the additional staff, the teachers, all that kind of thing. So, I mean, these are huge, huge numbers, I recognize, that have huge price tags, but the way we, the, we arrived at these numbers was, there are aspects or areas within the U.S. Census where you can identify how many children seventeen or below will be part of your population in 2035. So, it's pretty straightforward. Yes, sir?
Sure. And I know, you know, the, when we look at some of these numbers, they can catch your attention pretty quickly, but in looking at, at Chapter Two and thinking about, you know, where were we twenty years ago, and what has accomplished in education in the last twenty years? You know, the, the city has built scales, Elementary, Casey Lane, John Pittard, Siegel, overall Creek, there's five or six schools there. And I looked on the county page, and I believe I counted eleven schools that were built by Rutherford County. So, I know those numbers are alarming, and we need to pay attention to them, but in the past twenty years, we've also, you know, seen somewhat similar numbers and been able to accomplish that without a tax increase as well.
We also, in, in Chapter Five, we really were strongly recommending pushing this whole neighborhood unit concept. This was a, a concept that was developed by a planner named Clarence Perry in nineteen twenty-nine. He was the director of Planning for New York City, but he came up with this, this neighborhood unit concept whereby everything is within a quarter-mile radius, which is about a five-to-eight-minute walk. The center of that, of that radius would be a park or open space or school, or maybe it's a neighborhood commercial area, but it's a nice way of organizing a very walkable, Principle Sixteen, and I know that we are, let's just see, six-thirty right now, so we have, how much more time?
Five minutes.
Five minutes? Okay, good. Principle Sixteen, ensure compatibility. Develop multifamily housing at a density and scale that is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, available utilities, and roadway capacity. Larger multifamily developments should be located on sites with adequate space for off-street parking, accessory structures, and recreational activities. So, one of the recommendations that's coming out of the land use chapter is, and we, and you can see this, it's illustrated on the future land use map, where we've tried to utilize multifamily housing as a transition between the more intensive commercial, retail, and office uses and single-family residential neighborhoods. So, we're trying to use multifamily as a, as a transition between those uses. Just a couple examples of poor transitions on, on the upper part of this slide, or two examples of where the transitions between densities or intensities of development has basically broken down. On the left side, you have multifamily residential that's basically overlooking the backyards of a single-family development, and then on the right side, you have large palatial residential estates that are basically surrounded with extremely high, uh, single-family residential, might be zero lot-line housing, with precious little transition or buffer, buffer yard in between. A better transition is illustrated here where, on the left side of the slide, you have an existing kind of, uh, tree line that was probably from an early farm or, or so, and then on the right side was the use of a, of a golf course or a recreational amenity that can provide that kind of, uh, transition between densities and intensities of use. Principle Three, housing choice. Provide opportunities for a greater mix of housing types and sufficient quantity to serve current and future Murfreesboro residents and workers which are located in proximity to employment centers. So, the question is, does our community's housing stock satisfy the needs of an increasingly diverse citizenry? We, we are projecting a, a rapidly changing demographic of people that may not be interested in living in single-family residences or with a bunch of single families. There are, are a lot of, of growing, uh, individual kind of family unit that may want to live in a smaller, more compact living environment, that may not want to be mowing grass and that kind of thing. But at the same time, you have elderly people that want to downsize and, and live in more compact areas, and so we need to make sure that we have a diverse housing stock to accommodate these kind of needs. And just to mention, you know, here's another one of these spreads that came out of Chapter Five, that's basically a supply-demand kind of spread, but, you know, we're looking at the need of about, in 2035, to accommodate just the people within the city limits, some eighty-eight thousand new housing units. So, this is huge. And of those units, twenty-four, a little over twenty-four thousand will be single-family detached residential, and at a fifteen thousand square-foot parcel, you're looking at two-point-four dwelling, two-point-four-two dwelling units per acre. So, that's like ten thousand acres just for it to support a single-family residential kind of development. Principle Four, affordable housing. Support initiatives to develop new affordable housing. As, as we mentioned in, in Chapter Five, there's a large population here in the city that are cost-burdened. When it comes to owners with mortgages, twenty-nine point three percent of your citizens are cost-burdened. Fifty-two point four percent of your residents are cost-burdened. Now, when you factor in transportation, typically when you're, we're talking about cost, cost being cost-burdened, we're talking about over thirty percent of your household income going toward household living expenses. When you add transportation into that, your, the, the number is typically around forty-five percent of your household income should go to transportation and housing costs. So, in, in Murfreesboro, forty-eight point four-seven percent of your citizenry are cost-overburdened when it comes to that, and fifty-two point twenty-nine percent of people within Rutherford County are cost-overburdened. And so, there's two directions we can go, and we've had conversations about this earlier, where we don't, we're not, when it comes to affordable housing and affordability, one direction is try to make things cheaper and less expensive to, to accommodate people who are a certain kind of, have a certain household income that can afford only so much. But the other opportunity here is to, and we're going to be exploring this within our economic development chapter, but how do we raise the standard wage to where people can afford more things? They, they can afford more expensive things. I think that's probably the preferred way that we want to pursue affordable housing. Although, we're going to have to be looking at it in both ways. I'll, I'll finish up here. Expand recreational opportunities. Provide, maintain, and enhance recreational opportunities through the development of high-quality parks, facilities, and open spaces. Here, we're in, in the Chapter Six, we're recommending providing parks and recreational facilities that meet or exceed the established local standards and provide for both the present and future needs of the community. The spread here was, we, we point out the number of, of parks and open space that will be required to accommodate our projected population, excuse me, and we're looking at, at least five hundred additional acres of parkland, but then when you look at all of the, the sports fields, the active recreational, uh, ball fields, volleyball, basketball, soccer, all that stuff, that's another four hundred and seventy-seven acres, and that's just the, for the people within the city limits. It's not including the people that will be living in the planning area. So, that number will be increasing. So, with that, I think I'll stop there and open it up just for a couple minutes for questions. Do you think that we're, are we on the right track when it comes to not only the development of these principles, but how we're applying the principles? I guess is the, the key question here.
Big plate.
Aaron, I appreciate your time. I'll just make one comment, uh, as, repeat something that I said last night. So, pretty, you know, everybody here hears this, but, you know, I read through this, and one of the things that stuck out to me was this thing that says, it will be important that the land, the future land use map be used on a daily basis for the next twenty years to make these decisions. And so, as we're listening through these guiding principles, and we're talking through what these policies might come about due to these guiding principles, and when we do get to the details, I mean, you know, this is, I guess what I'd say is pretty serious business, and we need to make sure we've got our, our eyes open, our ears open in a real big way to, to make sure, I mean, I, one of the things when we get to a document this big, and I want to, I appreciate everything, all your work and what you're doing, and I had a good meeting today with them and felt like it was a very positive thing. I, I'll, you know, this thing is so big that one thing that I want to make sure is that we're not sitting here a few years from now saying, you know, somebody says, well, that's part of the comprehensive plan that you adopted, and we go, really? That was in there? And, you know, that was in some of the, the fine print somewhere? And we're going, golly, we said that? I know we can change it. Um, it's not going to be anything set in stone, but, um, you know, when I read stuff like that, it kind of piques my interest a little bit, and so we, hopefully we'll all, uh, I'm trying to encourage everybody I can to get involved, and I'm, you know, kind of hoping you guys would too.
And, and the comment that I'd make, you know, we, that we've had people involved in every phase of this, in every chapter, there've been the task forces involved, the community meetings or small groups that, that are, that are part of the stakeholders, as we've said, you know, involved in this. But, you know, I want to encourage that when we start talking about a community workshop now, those, we had a lot of enthusiasm and a lot of interest when we, you know, the first got together out at World Outreach. There was a lot of enthusiasm, a lot of energy, and just in every organization or any time I've ever done strategic planning or any kind, involved in this, there is a time in that planning process that you get weary. You get tired, and it's, you know, we've done- You get tired and it's, you know, we've done this, can we get on with this and move forward? This is an extremely critical time in the development of our, this whole process that we've engaged in in two years. I just want to put an asterisk by this in the public's mind. When you hear a community meeting, when that get, that time gets set and that opportunity for you to come out and participate in that workshop, this is critically important for the quality of life of our community to have your input and evaluation. And don't stand on the sidelines, don't leave it to somebody else. Get involved, read the document that's being presented. It's going to be on our website at some point in time. Chapters that are already completed are up. So begin, become, inform yourself as to what has already been presented. And then we'll have an opportunity at those workshops to get, to have the public's input and reaction to what has been done. This is when something has been thrown on the wall, now you react to it. And that's what, it's critical right now that you participate in this because for you and your children and your grandchildren, this is going to be an important part, a phase of this whole study, to have public's input. And it will not be the document that will be, as Rick was saying, usable on a daily basis unless you participate in it. So I just want to encourage everybody. End of sermon, amen, pass plates. This is, this is, get involved now. If you have sat on the sidelines and are gotten tired of the process of comprehensive plan, now re-energize yourself, be enthusiastic about it, get and participate in the process now because we, it's critical that we have your participation.
Thank you very much for saying that. It can't be underscored the need for engaging all of us in this program. We're going to, we haven't set the date yet, but we're going to be back sometime, probably toward the end of October. We're going to have a series of community workshops or community meetings. We haven't developed it yet, but I, we need to make sure that that's a robust kind of public planning program that involves all of our elected and appointed officials as well as the general public. I'm going to be working with Jennifer closely on setting that all up. But I would like to, from here on out, continue to come before you all and talk about the elements of this plan. It's very important that, as you know, we receive your buy-in and support now before we get too much further down the road because we're a very implementation-oriented consultancy and we want to make sure this thing's adoptable. So yeah, we look forward to continuing this dialogue. So thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Tully. Folks, we're going to take a two-minute break and then start back right at 6:45. Need to adjourn the special meeting and then we'll start back at 6:45. And I think we have four or five speakers that we've, will have before our seven meeting. So we'll stand adjourned.